... the flag which is up here on the stage. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I'm sorry if I yelled, I have a gun, I got my... I do not see any public comment. You do not need to sign in if you're here to speak about one of the ordinances. We just ask you to come front and center and give your name and address. We'll review that again. Consent agenda.
I make a motion to re- accept the consent agenda as presented.
Any discussion? Strong in favor?
Aye.
Are we opposed? Moving on to old business. We have before us a letter from the EMA Director Michael Dexter asking for Eric Rotundo to be the Assistant Director of EMA. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Eric Rotundo as the Assistant Director of EMA.
Second discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Appointment of Private Road Committee. I did contact all the people that were on the previous Private Road Committee and five of them have agreed to continue. Mr. Stone, you will be on that committee along with Mr. Lord. Do I have a motion?
It's right on your agenda.
Oh, alright. I'll make a motion to appoint Lisa Cardillo, Ann Cardoza, Jane Cruz, Lorraine Bowen, Janice Hannert, and you already said that Chris Stone will be on that committee as well.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Are any of them present?
We can't hear you.
You can't hear, oh, you can't hear Heidi?
Yeah, on that side of the table.
On that side of the table. Well, we can move that down because we know we can hear men. Lisa Cardillo, Ann Cardoza, Jane Cruz, Lorraine Bowen, and Janice Hannert were appointed to the Private Road Committee. Are any of them present? No. Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to new business. We have a letter from the Rhode Island Labor District Council on behalf of Local Union 1322. Is there a motion?
This is the negotiating committee.
This is for to accept to go in and to have a vote for the negotiating committee. So do we want to accept their letter request?
I make a motion to accept their letter request because it's a negotiations for Local Union 1322.
Is there a second?
Second.
Now discussion. Is there anybody who would like to be on that?
I'll be on it.
You're already on.
I'm taking the vote.
You're already on. Yeah, you're already on the negotiations. Let's spread the word.
Okay.
Is there anybody else who would like to?
I will.
You will? I will too. Okay. So, that being said, does anybody want to amend the motion or make a second motion after we accept this? Do you want to go into? We have a motion on the table to accept their letter for contract negotiations. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And can we now do a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Heidi. Heidi Rogers has been assigned as case under the negotiating.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on, we have a budget workshop. Kelly gave us this. I had talked to Kelly in regards to the budget workshops and what we had thought to do, have one be just for capital and then have two others, one for police and DPW and one for the other departments, so that we're not going through the whole spending multiple meetings. So, we do have this in front of us. The first one would be a budget committee work session for either Saturday, March 2, or Thursday, March 7. I don't know which works for.
Even on a smart grid.
That's the first table, Thursday, 6:00.
That's on the thing. Joe, and Chris, a Thursday's good for you, the 7th? Okay, so Thursday, the 7th. I think we need to make a motion to naturally think. And then, we have to pick some other meetings there recommended are 3/12 and 3/14, which would be before, or the 18th and the 21st are before?
Yes.
The 18th is a council meeting and the 21st is a council meeting?
Some of them are council meetings and some are not. So, some we would do before the?
So, the 14th is before council meeting, the 21st would be before council meeting? No, the 21st is at the time.
28.
Okay. So, looking at the dates that are there, 3/12, 3/14, 3/18, 3/21, 3/26, pick three.
We save other dates that are better. We try to schedule all that too.
Are they all on Thursdays?
I tried to pick mostly Thursdays, I think, and there are a couple Tuesdays and there's not.
Well, do you have any dates that work for you then?
I'm going Thursday.
If there's a council meeting, it would be before, if we start it, I would say 5:30. I don't know if that goes that work. So, what dates are we looking at in March?
That would be the 14th.
The 14th?
That's a Thursday.
That's a Thursday. Can you do, can everyone do like five on the Thursday? Chris?
Yep.
Yep?
Yep.
You're okay? Okay. So, 3/21 and then two more. The 14th?
The 21st? Is that we have some?
14th and 21st.
Oh, the 14th and the 21st. Okay.
At five.
The 14th would be at five, the 21st could start later because it's not a council meeting.
Oh, actually, I'd...
Better late than earlier, the better. Five? Okay. Yep. And do you want to pick one more just to? The 28th is the next council meeting.
I was thinking we were going to try to have a public hearing on the 28th.
Oh, yep. Okay.
We could do something before that if you wanted.
So, what if we did it on the 7th? If we did the 7th, 14th, and 21st?
The 7th, we're actually having our...
Budget workshop.
Our budget workshop, but if you wanted to do it immediately following, there should be nothing wrong with that.
Does that work for?
Or during it even?
Okay. So, we have 3/7 as a budget workshop, starting at 7?
Um, no, I was going to start it at 6:30.
Why would one start at 5? Why would we start at 5 since we're going to do the second?
So, the 7th at 5, 14, and the 21st at 5?
At 5. All at 5. So, the 7th would be the budget?
We'll start with the budget and then somebody presents?
And then we can do the capital?
Yep.
Okay. And then, on the 14th, we can do DPW and police?
Sure.
And then the 21st, all others?
Sure.
Okay. Did you get that, Mrs. Dillon?
I did.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on. We have Verizon poll petitions for Anthony Road.
We have this letter to the last...
Oh, the letter to, I'm sorry, the letter, I would like to table that to a later date.
Okay. I'll make a motion to table the letter to the Boston Town Council to a future council meeting.
Discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Moving on, Verizon poll petition number one for Anthony Road. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the poll petition for Anthony Road, Plan 1770237-1 as recommended by the DPW Director.
Second. And I want it noted that it should be installed at least three feet from the edge of the road. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anthony Road, number two.
I'll make a motion to approve the poll petition for Anthony Road, Plan 1770237-2 in accordance with the recommendation of the DPW Director, provided that polls are installed at least three feet from the edge of the road.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Additions and abatements.
I'll make a motion to approve the tax assessor's recommendation for abatements of the 2016 motor vehicle tax in the amount of $143.74.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on, we have public hearings. The first one is for Ray Cook, second hand sales license. Mrs. Dillon, do you have that? What we have to do is?
All you have to do is...
Just a little bit. So, we have a second hand, a request for a second hand sales license for new car parts and used car parts. Is Mr. Cook here?
Hi, how are you? Good.
Good. It's been a long time, I didn't recognize you. You're, do you have anything you'd like to say?
You know, I particularly don't, we're just, we're kind of revamping the business a little bit. Our objective is to lessen auto wheels on the lot and we're going to focus on service work. And that's our, our specializing in models, of course, but we do work on other cars. Whatever the customer wants, they have others on this.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing for Ray Cook's second hand sales license. During this time, someone can get up and speak in favor of the license and that people can speak in opposition to the license. I would ask that you come forward, state your name and address, and you will only speak to the council. Is there anyone who would like to speak on behalf of Mr. Cook?
I'll be right back. Gordon Rogers, I've known Ray and his son for many years, actually graduated with Ray, and Ray does live in town and Ray's been working here for quite a few years and I haven't seen any complaints. It's nice when you get somebody who's local, is vested in the town, opens up a business in the town, and I think he's a good fit for the town and I'm assuming in favor of the second hand license.
Thank you. And you've got his name and address? Anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Yes, would you come up front, please state your name and?
No, I just have some questions.
Okay.
My name's Larry Olivoe. I live at 181 Danielson Pike right next door. My question is, are they going to be junking cars? Because that's what's been going on behind the building.
That's a separate, that's a separate business that was going on there?
I have no idea.
Mr. Cook, I think is just going to maintain what he's been doing at this time. It's only to sell new and used car parts.
Okay, are they going to be junking cars to get used car parts?
Can I speak?
Yes.
My objective, like I was saying before, is we're two different businesses there. The only time we junk cars is when the cars, customers are banning them, they don't want to fix them, they're not going to fix them, we get rid of them. And that's, it's middle, like it may be one or two in the lot, and it's really just the maintaining of the lot and I actually need to get rid of more than I have. But scrapping at your scene is not us, it's the guys next door.
Okay.
It's my thing to do with us, I'm not interested in what they're doing, we have a completely different point of view, not affiliated. They do all the problem, you?
But when you look on Google, it shows the whole building. So, I don't know who's got what or who got what. So, what I do know, that behind the building, it's all contaminated with oil and debris, and there's a retention pond behind the building, and it has an oil sheen on it.
That is, that is DEM? Have you thought of calling DEM and reporting that?
Well, I came down to the town hall and talked to building and zoning and they were supposed to do that. I started this in August.
Yeah, if you could call DEM, that would also help. Mr. Horner, do you want to say something? Mr. Horner is our zoning official?
Yes, good evening. I just wanted to comment to the question you had over there. DEM has been out there for the gentleman next to Mr. Cook over there. They did walk around the property, they did their survey of whatever they do over there. He did call me and say to me, they didn't find anything in the water as far as sheen or anything in that water. There was a couple stipulations that the gentleman next door has to do. They wanted him to clean whatever trash was in there, cups, styrofoam containers, whatever's in that water, they need to contain that, and they have to put some sort of a fence over there so stuff does not get in that water. I'm pretty sure, and Mr. Cook can correct me if I'm wrong, they did walk over to your property to look around, and I don't think that they found anything on his side.
Okay, DEM had no problem with the black, the oil that's on the ground?
Well, there was, there was, he didn't actually say anything to be about that, he just said that there was no issue with the water because that was a concern. There were numerous people, I will tell you, that had a question about that, and that's why I called him and had him just go there to look and ensure it was okay. And he said he didn't see anything in that water that would create that. He did tell the gentleman he does have to clean up that stuff in the ground because it hasn't, I guess, permeated through the ground yet, but he does have to get on top of cleaning that. But he said Mr. Cook on the other side was all set, he didn't see any...
The other side isn't...
I'm the side closest to you.
I know.
Yeah. I know. Right, but...
So, we're going to have to stop you there because that's the other business and we're just looking at Mr. Cook now.
Right, okay.
I would suggest you call DEM if you have any concerns about that problem.
I have called DEM.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we going to have, how many cars are allowed there? Because it's a junkyard.
Yours included, I mean, you buy up, almost $40.
It's only an acre and a half land there. There's no room for people to park when they have these pots. Because hopefully, in front of the building, these vehicles. When it was Price Auto, the town council did for the limit?
Right.
Okay, on how many cars and how many parking places for customers and stuff. I think you guys should look into that before you approve anything.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any further questions or concerns? Mr. Savazio?
I have never spoken against a business in town. I didn't go to high school with Mr. Cook. The way you get used car parts is you take them out of a car. So, what's left is scrappable material or junk. We, the town of Foster has the worst zoning ordinances it could possibly have, and right now I think we have four, that I can count, used car parts salesmen, people claiming they're doing repairs, this and that. So, if you're going to continue to license businesses to sell used car parts, I think you're creating junkyards. But, I've been wrong before.
Thank you, Mr. Savazio. Anyone else that would like to speak in favor of Mr. Cook?
I have a question for Mr. Horner. Have there ever been any violations, zoning violations on Mr. Cook's side?
As of when I looked through the records over there, we don't, we don't have any violations on Mr. Cook's side. I have him on the other side, we're not here for a discussion for that. Because that building is split in half, and I agree with the gentleman, that it looks like one whole building.
Right.
But he's on one side, and he did agree that he needs to get rid of a few more cars, and I'm agreeing with that zone. But, he doesn't have any violations over there.
Okay.
I've never had to go over there and say anything to him. I just went over there one day to see who stuff in the back belongs to who was my concern, and he did state what he owns and what the other gentleman owns, so yes, he does not have any violations.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? I'm going to close the public hearing. What's the pleasure of the council at this time? We also have the option of reserving and postponing this decision until a later date. Before I make a motion, I just want to reiterate what you said, you're going to remove some of those cars from there.
My objective is to reduce our side by 50% of the cars.
To have, to be limited to what we can have? I'm trying to remember, I believe Price Auto used to be 50 cars was all that they could have on that whole lot. So, on his side, you could have 25? That's what I recall, I could be wrong with that. Do you see yourself having that many?
Absolutely.
Or, yes?
Yes, it's not a problem.
So, I'm motion to approve this. How long, Mr. Cook, would it take you to get it down to that?
I feel about three months. I can reduce it or not, you know, maybe quicker.
So, you have more than 25 cars there on your side now?
Yeah, there's a lot of customer cars too, and a lot of them are cars we need to be repaired, a lot of people are banning cars and it's set, we made for them to get rid of them, sometimes it takes a while.
Can we make it stop?
Not all my cars, but I can get rid of probably 25 cars easily in the next few months.
Yes, you said?
But I will have to junk them. I'm not going to do something, so they're basically going to be swept.
Because there are some concerns, we're going to, I would like to make a motion, from what I'm hearing, to grant Mr. Cook the license on a provisional 90-day trial to get rid of those cars and then come back and then we can approve it fully. That should appease most people. And do we want to include the number of cars that we would remove beyond that?
I think so.
So, with a total of 25 on your side, that would include customer cars and the cars that you're removing parts from?
Yeah, I think that might be up here.
And include that in the motion?
Okay, second.
25 cars. Any further discussion? So, we have a motion that we are going to provide Mr. Cook with a provisional 90-day license to stipulate that we will have a total of no more than 25 cars, including customer cars and the cars that he's removing used parts from. 90 days should be required to come back and we'll look at the licensing again.
I have a question about, about that. Who knows how many customers they're going to have?
How's that control happen?
Right, like, I mean, if you get repairs for 10 Avalos come in in one week, do you have to turn five of them away because you have 20 cars in the back? Or, I was just wondering how that works. I thought they were kind of separate, the vehicles in the back I thought would be separate to the vehicles in the front from there.
I think that has to be somewhat of a, like, a situation where if they're just going to be stored there and, you know, the zoning officials are out there, that's one thing, but if you're turning cars over because you're repairing them, that's kind of a pliable thing, so it's going to be a reasonable thing.
Right.
You just can't pile 40 cars in the back of a site and that's going to be it, right? So, you guys have to work and have good faith with the town because you have a neighbor that's watching you, and so therefore he can pull out, you know, the zoning officials, they can come up and they can say, okay, if you've got more cars that you're really not working on, your storage is there, or as Mrs. Savazio says, you're piling them up and now they're becoming junk. So, I think you have to kind of, has to be a little bit more a plausible situation where you can't think you manage, right? You, you've got to make a living, so if you've got to repair 15 cars a week, then that's the deal, but they've got to get out of there, otherwise your license will be at risk.
So, do we need to differentiate between the cars that are in the back just sitting there with the ones that are coming in on a daily basis to be over there?
What do you think about that, Mark, the other zoning official?
I agree with the councilwoman, I don't have an issue with, the gentleman has X amount of questions, he has no, he has no way of knowing how many vehicles are going to come in there with people to fix cars. So, by limiting him to that 25, say 50 people he made because they all had an issue with it, now what is he supposed to do with it? Like, gentleman, the officer, turn them away, you can't do that. So, if you wanted to limit the cars to the back, we can, him and I can discuss that. I really don't have a problem with that, I'm pretty sure nobody else will. Let the gentleman fix his cars, he needs to fix them and get them out of there.
Right.
So, whatever it takes, let him do it. Like I said, he doesn't have any issues over there.
He's getting rid of the junk cars, as they come.
Right, he has.
Right, I have a thought. So, in the back, say out front, which is the biggest, you, customer cars only, cars waiting to be repaired, in the back is the storage facility. Reduce that to 25, and now open it up, because I count the 40. So, if I take out 20, that leaves 20 cars in the back, maybe less depending on the situation, and then just leave the flat for your dear cars, or, you know, sometimes you can complete project as a little plate out, but usually they have registrations and plates on, so we'll know that they're active.
Okay, so, I'd like to amend Cheryl's motion that you be restricted to 20 vehicles as parts cars in the back?
In the back, right. And that really cuts it down possibly 70%.
Right.
And then the other cars would be in and out, plus your cars, we'll make sure that it works.
So, Heidi made that motion. Cheryl made the motion? No, the main motion Cheryl made, but it was amended.
I amended, I did amend.
Cheryl amended, yeah. So, going to the amended motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Rogers?
Just for a little, I know, probably to bring up history, but there was, years and years back, there was a situation with the cars there. I believe the officer, Paul D'Amelio, got involved, so there will be historical records in the town where there was something dealt with, a homeowner, he brought a lawyer and it was discussed. There was a limit put on cars, I don't know if it was removed after lawyer, but some of the main concerns of that was fire truck access, because at that time it was almost blocking any access to the building if the fire trucks needed to get up there and fight a fire. So, there was, there was something in the 90 days you might want to look back historically, we'll give you some input moving forward after the 90 days.
Thank you. Going to the main motion? Any further discussion on the main motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Cook. The next is the animal control ordinance. There were copies of it up there and what they amended. Just wanted to read what our hearing procedure will be again, so I'm assuming most people are here for that. We have that, the ordinance in front of us, it'll be read, and we will listen to your, those that are in favor of the motion, of the ordinance, and those that are opposed. Any person who wishes to speak will go to the microphone, provide his or her name and address. All questions and statements must be addressed to the council president. There'll be no cross-talk in the audience. There'll be a three-minute time limit. You are cautioned to avoid repetitious or irrelevant comments. Personal attacks will not be allowed. Once all have heard, the council will close the public comments and wrap up discussion. The president will then accept a motion to approve the application for the ordinance. The council does reserve the right to postpone a decision until the next regularly scheduled meeting, which in this case would be February 28th, on any ordinance. That being said, we have the animal control ordinance in front of you. There have been some changes that were made. I will say that I was on that committee. It consisted of, let me get my notes here. It consisted of, let me get my notes here. The committees consisted of Roth, Paul, who was the chair, Betty Lou Terry was the vice chair, Michelle Zimba, Lisa Zambine, and myself. Also in attendance for many of the meetings were Chief Zeal, Chief Wright, Aaron Marsland, and Pat Hayworth, who are our animal control officers. This meet, this committee started back in September of 2017. The reason it came about is because we began a contract with Situit and their animal control officers when our animal control officer retired. So, our mission statement was to review the current foster ordinances, review Situit's ordinances to make comparisons and adopt or modify if necessary. I will tell you, we spent a lot of time reviewing this ordinance, these ordinances, and we did not take our task lightly. That being said, we did approve the definition of a restraint. A restraint is any animal is under restraint within the meaning of this title if it is A) on a leash, or B) kept in an enclosure, or C) kept within a vehicle, or D) kept within the property of limits of its owner or keeper, E) kept under the command of heel, F) kept within the property limits of another person with that person's permission. Hunting dogs, including hounds, bird dogs, and retrievers in the process of training or when in legal pursuit of wild game in season are considered under restraint. If the owner is unable to keep his or her animal on his or her own property when not under control of a competent person, then a restraint mechanism shall be required. Penalties for violations. The animal control officer in the town is authorized to issue citations to the owners or keepers of dogs for violation of any provision of this article. Citations may be paid in person or paid by mail, which shall be by check or money order payable to the town foster, postmarked within 10 days of the date of the citation, and mailed by regular mail, postage prepaid, addressed to Town Foster 181 Howard Hill Road, Foster, Rhode Island 02825. Fines for the violation of any animal ordinance of the town shall be as follows. $20 for the first offense within a calendar year, $30 for the second offense within a calendar year, and $50 for the third offense, subsequent offense within a calendar year. All fines for violation of any provision of this article shall be added to the general fund of the town. As long as the Town Foster is under the contract with the Town of Situit for Animal Patrol, the Town Foster will follow the fines of violations enforced by Situit. The following words, terms, and phrases when used in this chapter shall have the meanings ascribed to them in this section, except where the context clearly indicates a different meaning. Animal patrol officer means the person employed by the town as an enforcement officer and shall include any police officer of the town. A) The owner shall be entitled to regain possession of any impounded dog or other animal. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped a line. Redemption fees and fines. The owner shall be entitled to regain possession of any impounded dog or other animal, except as herein after provided in the case of certain dogs, at any time upon payment of impoundment fees set forth herein. Any dog or other animal impounded under the provisions of this chapter and not reclaimed by its owner within five days may be humanely destroyed by the animal patrol officer or placed in the custody of some person deemed to be responsible and suitable person, who will agree to comply with the provisions of this chapter and such other regulations as shall be fixed by the animal patrol officer. We're going to replace Chapter 8-103 with the following: Classification and Disposition of Unclaimed Dogs. The owner shall combine within a building or secure enclosure every known fierce, dangerous, or vicious dog or other animal as determined by the town's vicious animal panel, and not take such dog or other animal out of such building or secure enclosure unless such dog or other animal is securely muzzled. Secure enclosures may include fences capable of confining such dog or animal and/or other animal, but shall not include so-called electronic or invisible fences. Every female dog or other animal indeed shall be kept confined in a building or secure enclosure, or in a veterinary hospital, or boarding kennel, or under control of a competent agent, in such a manner that such female dog or other animals cannot come in contact with another dog or animal, except for intentional breeding purposes. C) Any animal described in the foregoing subsections of this section found at large or not confined as prescribed may be impounded by the animal patrol officer, or the owners thereof may be cited to appear in the district court to answer charges of violation of this section. If the animal is impounded and if the owner is known, the officer shall notify the owner within 72 hours from the time the animal is impounded for a hearing to determine whether there has been a violation of this subsection. We did delete Section 8-154, unspayed female dogs, period confinement. We also deleted the last sentence of Section 8-155, failure to obey animal control officer's orders, seizure of animal, payment of fees, disposition of dog on failure to claim. If five days after being notified, the owner or keeper does not reclaim the dog and pays the fees and expenses, the animal patrol officer is empowered and authorized to kill the dog and charge the expense of execution and disposal for the dog, and charge the expense of execution and disposal, $5 to the owner or keeper.
And that was deleted.
And that was deleted.
Right.
Yes. I do want to, I was provided with some information from Mr. Marsland, that in 2018, there were a total of 34 animal bites, 28 from dogs, four from cats, and two from horses. So, and is that on a rise? Is that an increase from 2017?
Yes.
That being said, is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of this ordinance? Yes, could you come forward, state your name and address?
Oh, I'm vertically challenged. That's good. Thank you.
I'm Pat Shaw, I live in Palo Alto. I would really like to see this go through. There was one place in particular where I would walk my dogs, and we were attacked three times by one dog. So, I don't even walk that way anymore. I have not seen a dog there lately when I drive by, but it's not, it's scary to have another dog, and my dogs are on leashes. And, and I spoke to the person, and he just stood there in the background and just watched his dog attack mine. And, he didn't say a thing. And when I walked away the third time, I said to him, not angry or anything, you really need to do something about this dog, because he's going to either hurt my dogs, or he's going to hurt me. And I know two other people that have had the same problem with this particular dog. So, I would really like to see something done. I could find my dogs, they're not allowed to run loose. And, to me, it's like putting a toddler outside and letting him roam the yard without you there. It's very dangerous. Coyotes around, they will kill a dog, they will surround a dog to kill it. They're antifreeze, they get into that, they'll die. There's a lot of things, they could get into something poison, and I've also heard that some hunters, when they have a kill, if they see a dog approaching, they will kill that dog and keep it away from their meat. So, it's really very dangerous. If you love your animal, then please, I hope this passes.
Thank you. I'm sorry, did you give your name? I know you said to catch you off. She did, thank you. I didn't hear that one, I heard "call." Anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this ordinance?
Also vertically challenged the other way. Right. A lot, this originally came about when, when I was on the council, and what happened was a lot of the enforcement personnel, the dog officers, the police department, would literally go out and, because of complaints, and go to the house, and what would happen is no sooner did they leave, looking in rearview mirror and seeing things was happening. And then you started hearing about other complaints with other animals, so I am definitely speaking for this. You know, the guy that gets struck by lightning seven or eight times, I'm the guy that gets bit by dogs constantly. So, I'm a magnet for getting bit by dogs, but I think every responsible animal should actually root for this, because it gives them all good names, and it weeds the bad ones out, and it gives some type of enforcement where people can just not simply ignore it. Now, they have to pay for the regressions of their dogs given your neighbors' garbage. Or, chickens getting in and animals destroying your property, so I am definitely for this ordinance, I think if you get too fast, that's the way it stands.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Yes.
Jennifer Luddy from 57 Maple Rock Road. I'm new to the neighborhood, and I was bitten last September. The dog was not restrained, I was running with my son, who is 13 years old. The dog started to go towards the 13-year-old gentleman, I started yelling, he came to me, and the dog was still afraid, going towards my son. I said, "Get your dog, get your dog," you know, and sure enough, you know, he held the dog. New to the neighborhood, starting to meet neighbors, it turns out this dog has bitten previously. I would suggest if, you know, a higher violation fee, if there's a history, if there's a previous, you know, bite in history. But, I do agree that this needs to be put in effect.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposite?
I have a question. Does this also include the electronic senses, security sensors for dogs?
It's in here.
I, I see a part here that says not include so-called electronic sensors.
Right.
Is that because they're just aggressive, or are they not a history? What, what does this mean?
I'm try, oh, here it is, here. It states that secure enclosures may include fences capable of confining such dogs or other animals, but shall not include so-called electronic or invisible fences. I'm thinking that, the feeling is that for vicious dogs, this is for vicious dogs, so that they can't get out. I mean, I, I know, the dog next door is, they have an electric fence, it went after a rabbit, and it just bolted through. Then couldn't get back in, because it bolted through it. So, that's for vicious dogs.
Oh, for vicious dogs, thank you.
Okay? That needs to have a little more restraint, if you will.
I just wanted to clarify for the woman who was just speaking, if the dog bites you, then it's going to go to a vicious dog hearing. It's, the fines are for dogs that run out at you, like you said. If a dog does bite someone, it goes to a vicious, excuse me, a vicious dog hearing with the police in our animal controls.
I believe I was the second offense on this dog that was reported, and I was probably the fifth, three in the world.
Well, we have to have it recorded in order to.
I understand.
Right. Is there anyone else? I do have someone who had called in, couldn't make tonight's meeting, but called in their concern, and their concern was, it was Mike Carpenter. And, I don't know Mr. Carpenter's address, but we have that. Is it Howard Hill?
Danielson Pike.
Danielson Pike?
Oh, my God.
Yeah. He would like all dogs that are picked up scanned for a chip before they are killed in five days. He was told that it is a no-kill shelter, but he would still like that added. There were some questions, Betty Lou and I had some questions asked of us in regards to the animals being euthanized within five, or after five days. Do you want to address that either, Pat or Aaron?
So, when an animal's astray, it comes into the dog pound, by state law, we have to hold it five days. That's not, you know, you can't, if a dog's not open for holidays. After the five days is up, the dog now belongs to the town. Depending on the outcome of the dog would be one of the reasons why it came in the first place. If it was vicious where it hurt somebody, you know, we would have to take that into account. But, as far as destroying an animal just because it's five days is up, we haven't done that, I, I don't think we've ever done that. We usually give, depending on the circumstances, we'll even give it a longer period of time. Currently, I have a golden retriever that was picked up right here on 94th. He was here for five or six days, we made a vet appointment, we had him taken to the vet, he was updated on his vaccinations, he was tested for Aids Leukemia, yeah, Aids Leukemia, hotworm and Lyme, he was positive for Lyme, so he's under treatment for Lyme. One is, once that's cleared up, he's going to be neutered, and then he can be placed for adoption. So, there's, even though that five days is up, we're talking long-term on most of the animals that are coming in. So, if an owner does come forward, whether it's eight, 10, 12 days later, I've had, I've had a cat in it, the owner come in four months later, we're treating the cat for asthma, and it was returned to the owner. So, we don't just have five days and we put something down. We have a dog currently there now that's under training, and she'll be there here in March.
I'd also like to add that under the state law, we're required to make a reasonable effort to locate an owner. And as long as we can handle the dog, we, all the animal control officers that I know, have the microchip scanner. Do you have that?
Yes. That was going to be my next question.
We scan the dogs and we scan the cats. Okay, thank you. This is my question, do they have the capability of doing that? So, we'll get that information to Mr. Carpenter. Thank you. Yes.
Lynn Divitts, Main Road. I just have a question about the definition of restraint. So, my dog doesn't heal, and we're in a rural area without sidewalks, so for those who are walking right beside you, but she is under a stay or wait command. So, I don't know if that's, if that would qualify.
That, yeah. Heal is generally, yeah.
It just, okay. And the other one is, you include hunting dogs as being allowed, but it doesn't mention, and this is a farming town, by the way, animals that are hurting dogs, so, so, you might want to be added to that restraint.
Thank you. Yep. Right, right. But this, right, I would think that that, what Ms. Fords was saying is that a herding dog is certainly highly trained and would, I wouldn't see a herding dog going off the property without someone being with them.
Not really, right.
And they would, they would obey command. Where the hunting dogs and the hound or bird dogs, they might be out of the owner's vision, if you will.
Sure. I have a herding dog, and she's perfectly fine unless a rabbit wants to cross her fence and couldn't lead what she's supposed to be doing.
Any other questions or concerns? Yes.
That would, you, includes search and rescue, because they're not always with.
Right.
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 Okay, I'm going to close this portion of the public hearing. So, I've just been informed that we cannot adopt it tonight until we have a second reading, which would be at the next council meeting, so we would adopt it at that time. Thank you. Moving on, we have the solar ordinance. And we have with us Jennifer Sissolino, who is our planner. So, Jennifer, do you want to?
Sure, sure. So, the town council in September had asked the planning board, had asked the planning board to look over the current solar ordinance, and they're, they have some experience. have some experience from previous projects of major solar installations. I provided them some suggestions for possible changes, which include increased vegetative buffer, an additional requirement for bonding for landscaping or drainage and other issues, possibly changing maximum coverage to 30% so the solar panels would only cover 30% of the property or requiring town council approval. The planning board took some of my recommendations and some of them, they did not. So what you see before you are their recommendations that they voted on. They include taking out their major solar installations that are between what you would put in your house versus a really large major installation and just calling anything over 25 kilowatts a major. So it would have to go for planning board approval for a major solar installation. The other changes would be requiring a year-round opaque terrain masking to block the view of the installation so that the planning board has the flexibility to make different recommendations for different projects, but masking the view from the street. The other addition was to include a landscaping plan that would also require a bond to maintain it with a third-party cost estimates. And then there was also an addition of third-party cost estimates for decommissioning bonds, which already exist in the ordinance, and those are the only changes that they've suggested.
Thank you. I'm going to open this public hearing. Again, I would like to remind you that if you do speak, please come forward, state your name and address. You will address only the council. There will be no cross-talk in the ordinance, ordinance, audience. Thank you. And we will then close the public hearing and take a motion or reserve the right to postpone. Yes.
Jennifer, can you tell us which one state the planning board did not accept of your proposals?
Sure.
Please.
Sure. So the other recommendations I made were increasing the maximum, well, not increasing, creating a coverage of, limiting it to 30% of the land area, which is pretty significant still, but then you wouldn't be able to chop the whole entire lot down and put all solar panels, you'd only be able to do 30% of your lot.
And that was rejected by the planning?
They didn't, they didn't, I wouldn't say they, they talked about it, but then they didn't decide to vote for it.
What is the percentage now?
There is no percentage, right. So they could do the whole piece.
Okay, all right.
Yes. And that's the significant portion. And then I said that they could require town council approval, so that would have to be changed in the zoning ordinance, or you could make that an additional stipulation that they have to come to town council, but that would have to be changed in the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now that the public hearing is open, Mrs. Ryder had her hand up first. Mrs. Ryder.
Basically, I have a question. It's about the year-round opaque terrain masking. I did speak to Mr. Carpenter because I guess he was the one who brought this forward because I was looking for, you know, what exactly does that mean? And I just wanted to know if everybody was on the same page. The way he explained it to me is that it does not include fences or trees or leaves or pines or stumps. It only includes the physical characteristics of the land, giant rock outcroppings and so on and so forth. So that year-round, no matter where you stand on another person's property, you cannot see this thing. That would include hills, valleys, you know, whatever totally masks it. And that's what he explained, year-round opaque terrain masking, not pine trees, not bushes, not anything like that. Is that what the whole, that is the understanding?
So also these would have to be in like a valley or something, right?
They, go ahead, Jen.
Oh, I would just say that it would also include berms, like creating a berm out of earth. Well, you're right, maybe we should define that as part of the zoning ordinance.
Yes, could you please come forward, state your name and...
Hi, my name is Monique Taylor, 14B Hartford Pike. Okay. In July of 2018, a superior court judge ruled that with regards to solar farms, they're considered to be manufacturing. And I would like to see in the books that say manufacturing use is not allowed in residential areas. That would give us a leg up for people who live in that area, for our butters who have been arguing about it, as we have about the 101 project. It would give us an opportunity to take it to court and say, hey, you can't do that because this is manufacturing. And we would have a judge that would say, okay, it was ruled in 2018, it was manufacturing. So I would like that added in there.
Can I ask the planner a question about that?
Yeah, I actually heard about this court case and what makes it new, different than what's going on in Foster is that they had no solar ordinance and the town just allowed the installation without a particular ordinance, so it wouldn't be...
You allowed a zone change, okay? That's what you did, you allowed it to be, the zone to be changed. And you're right, we don't have anything on the books to protect us.
Well, what I'm saying is that in the court case, they had no solar ordinance like we do. And the town, this town that you're talking about, the court case, allowed, Fort Smith allowed the solar installation and then people had sued and the town lost.
Could you let Jennifer speak, please? Let Jennifer speak.
So the town lost because they allowed it, but basically the court, I had spoken to the assistant solicitor about this and it's not, it's not the same, the big issue was that there was no solar ordinance in the books.
I will say, the reason we're looking at a solar ordinance is to protect us. What it looks like is what we're here to discuss tonight, part of it. But we're here to protect us, the town, because it can come down that the state, if we don't have an ordinance in place, they can come down, the state can come down and say, okay, this is what's going to happen now. And we don't have a say in it. But if we have an ordinance in place, we have a better chance of them not being able to come and tell us what we have to do.
So can you put in there that manufacturing is not allowed in residential...
I made a note of it. I made a note of it.
That's not a, that's a superior court judge, that's not the round Supreme Court, that's not, that's one judge making one decision.
That's one judge that made a decision based on another court decision.
Right, but it's not from the round Supreme Court and so consequently, that hasn't been litigated to an ultimate decision.
This is a...
No, you can do it, but what I'm saying is that, that'll get litigated because, because whether or not that's going to be accepted statewide is another story.
This was a superior court judge...
I know, I know a lot of it.
...who ruled this based on a Supreme Court decision that was made prior.
What I'm saying is Supreme Court has not defined that as, that this is manufacturing. That's, that case, that's, you're manufacturing sunlight to come down into these solar panels. That was the manufacturing part of that case.
Right, you're changing wind into electricity.
But what the town planner's saying is that we have, we're going to have an ordinance, so you've got to go before the planning board and the planning board is going to determine what can go where and how it's going to be. That's what Mrs. Abazio's committee is here for. So basically what they are, is they ride herd over these guys coming in or these companies coming in and they make the ultimate ruling of what's going to happen with that or where it's going to go.
I know what they do, I've seen it firsthand. I live across from the proposal, I'm 101.
Right. So I'm just telling you that, that's, they made a note of it, but you know, what I'm saying is that, that's what the ruling was because there was no ordinance in that town and that's what happened.
Okay, and the rules that you're going to make, do they apply to people who haven't started construction yet?
Yeah. Yeah, it's stuff that's not in the pipeline. So if there's something before the planning board now that's already in the pipeline, this will not apply. This new, this new tweaking ordinance, but if someone were to come after this, if this gets approved, then they're required to comply with this. But if they're already in the pipeline, they're already kind of grandfathered in because they got in before a change in the ordinance.
Thank you.
Yes. Mr. May.
If I heard correctly, I think Jennifer mentioned that we're going to restrict the land mass that can be used for solar to 30% of the entirety?
That was a recommendation that she had made, but the planning board did not present that.
Is there a maximum percentage of property that can be used for solar?
Right now, we do not have anything saying any minimum or maximum.
Okay, as long as you comply with the other influences of the ordinances, our screening, fencing, etc. So there's nothing in the ordinance that says you restrict it to 30%?
No, not at this time.
Thank you.
Did you have...
Okay, let's see if I can do this without Mr. Rogers. I learned from the best, Amita Brodmann, 27, Tucker Hall Road and other properties on Tucker Hall Road. I'm going to offend a lot of people tonight. It's okay. I really think that the entire solar ordinance needs a review, just like...
Needs what?
A review. Not unlike what the hard work you just did on the animal control ordinance. I have gone through some neighboring towns very quickly. Most of those ordinances are a bit younger than ours and they encompass a lot more of the ambiguities, some of which our planner was attempting to speak to in this September, October process. So I have three areas of comment. One is a very small procedural one, is that when we have a public notice on the ordinance, it would be really helpful to have the full ordinance as written and to be amended as part of the notice so that people like me can figure it out, it was really hard. And I'm still not sure I figured it out. I went online to our town website, I'm not trying to be critical of the person, I'm just saying, let's post, that is it. Well, I don't, we could talk about it all.
I know a lot of people ask that same question. Is this all that there is, two paragraphs? And I said, yes, that's...
Well, I don't think the new code's going to say changes will inquire, all I'm saying is it's really hard to figure out what we're doing if you can't read it in code language, please. That's procedural thing. So I have some map of comments, and then I'll speak to the two amendments that are around us. Obviously, we've been talking about solar for a very long time and I'm not sure where we, what happens with the proposal, I guess it was last June, about considering a moratorium, not unlike what Lobster has done, not unlike what Tiverton just did, which is, in any event, all I'm speaking to is there's a need to really stand back and look at alternative energy ordinance in total, solar ordinance for that matter. We kind of lack provisions in my reading or as a citizen and a major butter, that gives the CBR, the planning board and you the flexibility as well as the authority, I think, we all need to do things. You don't have a way, we don't have a way to require third-party professional review of studies. The town of Foster does nothing in our ordinances that allow this for any major land development, let alone restricting it only to solar or alternative energy. And why does this come to be? Well, the applicant brings in their experts and at the CBR, for example, those experts testified, several of us had, took issue with some of the statements made, they were misstatements, and yet there's no finding of fact to help this with. I can cite some specifics, but I don't think we want to get into the specifics of the 101 proposal, but there are some specifics. We rely then, the town relies then on DEM, great, as it applies to water. But DEM has noted things that they cannot officially note in the giving or granting of the application. They can't note to us publicly that they're concerned about boulder removal. And yet I know that this town has said, you shall not last. And unofficially, they're saying, we don't know how they're going to get this done. I'm sorry if I'm feedbacking.
No, I think it's coming from...
That's what I'm asking. So I'm just citing as an example why we could... Who needs... It's even worse, I'll just hold it.
Do you want to just turn it off?
I can't, there's a question.
Hang it up?
You want me to use that instead? All I'm saying is, we don't have those flexibility points to, at times, require third-party. And I'm seeing it in other towns' ordinances in many different ways. Some have independent review, technical advisory committees, some require a special impact fee for a special impact study. And this doesn't have to just be for solar, it could be for anything. When it comes to bonds, we keep speaking about bonds to decommission. There are many ways to provide surety and performance bonds. I'm not sure why we're so focused only on decommissioning and landscaping. I know why landscaping, because of the fiasco that happened on Route 6, but again, that's a very immediate focus and there are other things that need surety bonds as well. When and if there's a flood that happens, an unusual flood, it's the town of Foster that's going to pick up the cost for repairing 101 and the My Road and make the road. And the, I'm speaking now with specific proposal, of course, and there's going to be no way to require the installer to be a person to town. So I'm going to pick that up as a taxpayer, besides that, my basement's going to be a problem. So there are things I feel continue to be ambiguous in giving you the authority that I want to have or I want to have. There's also an ambiguity that was spoken to by our council and at the CBR that certain restrictions about masking landscaping could not be addressed because how will we define rural? You can tell by my attitude that I don't particularly agree with that point of view. We have a comprehensive plan, our ordinance says we shall do things according to the comprehensive plan, yet when it comes to how much we're going to defoliate or change, we said, well, we can use the characteristic of Foster being rural as a reason to amend or deny the application. If that's the case, it just supports my... If that's the case, it just supports my argument, we need to revise this ordinance in full. Coming to what's in front of us. I don't fully understand the language that says we're gonna change service industries, which I assume is like National Grids, holdings, and Foster, from special use permit to, quote, prohibited use in neighborhood commercial and general business mixed use. I don't understand any of these four reasons. It may be appropriate, but I just don't understand. According to the last comprehensive plan, which is old, the service industries have our major landholders, Gloucester. National Grid has a lot of land. Is this still the case? And if it is the case, have we kind of looked at how those holdings intersect with, you know, the NC and the GPM? I have no idea. Is there a strategic or business reason why we're specified that service industries are prohibited in NC and GPM and not in AG? And what does that do? Doesn't that shift the focus to another zone that's called AG? We don't have a distinction, except Jennifer just spoke to it, so maybe we do, between minor and major, that's called medium. And I gather by this definition of how many kilowatts are going to be produced.
Yeah, so it divides it into like three different categories. Twenty-five kilowatts and under, which is like the residential, that sort of doesn't count for the ordinance, that's more personal. So anything between twenty-five kilowatts and, I believe it's two-hundred-and-fifty megawatts? Between that, there was a minor, and then anything over two-hundred-and-fifty megawatts, well, I'm not sure it's a megawatt. It's two-hundred, maybe it was two-hundred-and-fifty kilowatts. Anything over that was major. So what we were proposing is that anything over twenty-five kilowatts of residential would be major.
So there's no medium, or-
So there would be no medium, yeah. Everything would come before planning and go through the whole process.
Well, there's no medium now, but several towns do have medium. Just for the record, my home system produces forty. So I-
You are?
I'm unusual, but I'm above twenty-five, is my point, okay? So there might be a reason to want to have three tiers. I'm not a proponent of it, I'm just saying. But when we say we're gonna restrict it in NV and so forth, what if, now just think forward five years, we've got the economic development committees come back and suddenly things are booping with Gloucester. I've got what it happens, right? What if I'm a commercial operator and I want to put in covered parking that's solar? In a modern way? This would absolutely restrict that, as I read it, you know? So we're not putting in flexibility points at all. So those are my comments on that code amendment. That's the, what happened to the table of uses. On the supplementary regulations, I certainly support that this all should be called major land development. And I assume that doesn't change the fact that it still comes before the CBR planning. I would hope that that applies across all zones. But there are other aspects of this that this isn't addressing. Solar installations have twenty-plus-year lifespans. A landscaping bond for five years? Why? Things happen, weather changes. I don't fully understand that, given the vagaries of what we're living through. Why not clarify the language to allow the town to establish a timeframe for the bond of not less than five years, but the option to require renewal? And why only landscaping bonds? What's the consequence of a failed vegetation? What if the bond doesn't cover, I mean, I'm not quite sure how this works. If it fails, does the town take action by forcing the bond to be redeemed? I'm not sure I understand the dynamics of this. I just wanna be sure it gets spoken to with the long-term flexibility that such an approval requires. We're talking about a twenty-plus-year lifespan. So if any of those pieces resonate for you, I think it supports my view that we should take no action until we've looked at it in total and actually have a very surprescribed moratorium forcing us to come forth with provisions to this ordinance that we, for many, many concerns that have been raised by the Hartford Solar application. And I think this is not like we're injected a wheel. We are fortunate that many neighboring towns have done this, and a little plagiarism wouldn't hurt here. So I'm just speaking again in favor of, like I did in October, I feel we need a moratorium. Thank you.
Mr. Zabozio, we've got his hand up first. Mr. Zabozio?
I don't wanna cut Len off, but I'm sure Len would like to say the same thing.
He might be saying the same thing. Oh, please.
About twenty-five years ago, when I was on the planning board, and we were deciding to turn things down, and we were working on general business mixed use, which turned out to be retail, and retail's dead. I made a statement, and everybody was horrified. I said, you know, the longer you keep Gloucester rural, someday you're gonna end up with a lot of crap that nobody else wants. Okay? So, do we want solar farms? No. We're trying to build an ordinance. The ordinance may need further review. But you have to start someplace, you need this ordinance. The planning board intends to rework zoning to try and prevent solar farms from going into our different areas, especially our business areas. I remember saying at one hearing, nobody's mentioned the Right to Farm Act yet, I remember here saying at the 101 hearing, you know, DEM hasn't looked at this yet. Counting on DEM and Foster is probably one of our greatest assets, okay? We can't do a better job of protection of that. Trying to limit thirty acres or thirty percent of any parcel, there are very few parcels that probably are fifty percent usable. I have one of them. So we do need to control this. Nobody wants to see it. The best thing we can do is screen it. I remember the first time saying, we need, what are they, burms? And I got laughed at. The one thing we have to do is protect the citizens and neighbors. On the other hand, we have to allow the people that own property to use their property to their benefit. So this is a tough balancing act, and I'm gonna say what I said in the beginning. The longer you keep Gloucester rural, the more people, business people, will look at the space we have available and say, boy, there's a spot we could run into. So do we want solar farms? No. Are they ugly? Yes. But I really think we need to move on this ordinance, and then if it, you could have your attorneys go back and say maybe this and maybe that, but Jennifer's giving you a real good look at this. We worked out in a long time. Is it perfect? Probably not. But you have a lot of things to balance in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Ryder.
Len Ryder, Bruce Road. I know there seems to be a feeling in some circles where less is more, as far as zoning goes. But it seems that as we're getting into things like solar farms, or be it gravel pits or whatever, that the knee-jerk reaction is to end up in court. And it seems to me that if you have as comprehensive an ordinance as you can, you can always release the reins a little bit. But if it's not there, you can't tighten up. Now, I did, I looked for one for Situit, I couldn't find it, maybe it's there, I hate their website. But I did find the one in Gloucester, which is very comprehensive. Perhaps it doesn't, is it you or me?
It was me, but not-
Okay.
For that.
We're spreading it around.
You know, I mean, they just may be little things, but I think that they can amount to bigger things. You know, just going, just briefly going through, and as far as distribution lines. I know what the distribution lines look like going to those windmills on Plainfield Pike, not all that attractive. You know, Gloucester just has, to the extent practical, try to put them underground if you possibly can. Another thing, you know, about the fencing, and I know I'm going to be ridiculed for this, but that's okay. Leaving it, you know, again, Gloucester has eight inches above ground for your bunnies and your weasels and everything, because if you're, you know, if you're envisioning twenty, thirty, forty-acre solar farm, and you are eliminating that amount of habitat, I think it's significant. And, you know, no, obviously you don't want the deer in there, you don't want the coyotes. If somebody wants to get into one of these things, they're gonna, unless you've got razor wire on the top, do they have razor wire on the top?
No.
No?
They should be prohibited.
Huh?
A lot of towns prohibit that because if deer get caught on it, they-
Right, right, right. But I'm saying, somebody's gonna go over, I mean, a little eight inches, you know, if they're gonna dig under, you know, rather than digging two feet, they'll, you know, dig a foot and a half, big wood. But maybe something like that. Another one, and it's something I hadn't even thought of, is that new fences need to be flagged to protect the fencing and the wildlife for at least six months. You know, you put up a new fence and you've got all kinds of critters banging into it. And I know even the one on 101 particularly has bald eagles around it. Put some streamers, you know, something to flag it, make these animals aware. These are all little things, but I think that they can amount to important things. And I really, you know, I would wish that you would go through, or someone would go through, the ordinance again, again, and, you know, yeah, you don't have to reinvent the wheel. Plagiarize from Gloucester, or at least look at Gloucesters, item by item. Some of them probably have no relevance to Gloucester at all. But some of them are just things you didn't think of, that somebody else, you know, it's a small thing, but it can make a difference.
Thank you. Is there, I believe we're still on in favor, although it sounds like-
I know, I don't know whether I'm-
Opposition too. Is there anybody who does wanna speak in favor? Oh, okay. Ms. Fossey, one?
I was under the impression that Jennifer has looked at Gloucesters, would you, but not to the fact where it's been, some things have been incorporated into this possibility? Yeah, I have looked, because I've heard from other parties, I didn't even know she was gonna speak on that, on the cigar, but I heard that Gloucester had a really good copancy.
They did, and they, just to let you know, Situit doesn't have a solar ordinance.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
But Gloucester did revamp their solar ordinance. They have like the thirty percent coverage restriction as well. They have like a height limit that the, that the solar panels can't be more than twelve feet high and things like that.
Well, I am in agreement with that, one of the comments that Ms. Ryder made, is that if we make it stronger ordinance, we can always change it and let up, but we can't take it back after it's been, and unharmed its fine.
I think the planning board had developed an ordinance, and it was in place, and then we sent it back. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Zabozio and Mr. Carey. Then we sent it back because concerns, you learn as you go. We learned some things. Route Six was a biggie. We sent it back for them to look at, so maybe we send it back again.
Sorry, I left the sheet to this.
Mr. Carey wanted to speak, yes.
I just wanna be sure you didn't record my comments being in favor.
No, 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 no. Oh, no. We, no, that's why I was saying, I was, I was asking for a favor. There evidently was no one in favor. So, we're in the opposition.
Absolutely.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Carey.
I'm a member of the planning board for the last five, six years. I was involved in the first solar ordinance. Of course, that was way back when we thought, you know, they were gonna be on farms, sheep were gonna graze under them, and it was all great, and then we got up on Route Six, and we had some difficulties, and so we said, you know, we really should look at this again. During the process of reviewing, Gloucester in November first adopted their new ordinance after they had moratorium since June. Me and Anthony Renzi, as we were sending this to the council that evening, said, you know, we had just seen this, and, you know, this is very comprehensive ordinance, and, you know, maybe we should look at this a little closer, but, you know, we were under a timeline because the council was-
We did give you a timeline.
Giving us, you know, telling us to get moving on it. So we really did it, I think, you know, we need to do more work on this. I think there's things that are in here, and I reviewed it a little today, just going over, and I think as far as what Jennifer had mentioned about coverage, they use though, instead of the property, they use the buildable area of the property. So you use thirty percent of the buildable area. So, I know we shouldn't speak in particular, but as far as the one on Route Six, there's thirty-some acre that we named forty. With wetlands, there was nine acres of usable land on that property. So basically, they used every square inch of buildable land with their wetland buffer. So, and the one on Route 101 is probably gonna be in the same thing because there's a forty-acre parcel, they're proposing to use a possibility of twenty-five acres. I haven't seen the updated plan since I went to DEM again. I think they've got their approvals, or they've gotten back from DEM. But with the wetland setbacks, it's probably gonna be in the area of probably seventy percent of the buildable area of that lot. So I think that language there is very important to help us mitigate some of these problems we're having with, you know, the visual thing. And then there's some language in there about clearing of the forest, thirty percent, I believe, of the forested property, tend to clear for solar use. You know, so there's a lot of real good ideas, things that they adopted that are really good, that we didn't think about three years ago, four years ago, when we did our first ordinance, that we were probably one of the first towns that had a solar ordinance, because we had a applicant that came forward, and there was a farm, and they wanted to do it on the farm, so we were kind of blindsided. Plus, before, we actually had our ordinance before the state decided to say, we can't pay for the full rate of it. So we were looking for revenue from this, and our revenue was really limited. So I think, you know, there is things that we can still work on, you know, and I don't wanna take too much time with it, but I, you know, I'll work with Jennifer, and maybe, you know, try to bring this back to the planning board for a little more review, if you think that's good. I mean, there's a lot of the language that's in our ordinance, and some of the, if you read our ordinance-
Yes.
And you read their ordinance, a lot of our language is in their ordinance, and our ordinance was before theirs, so it's just the same thing. You can use the same language. It applies to the same thing, you know? It applies to the same thing, you know, it's not plagiarism when you use an ordinance. All our ordinances usually come from towns that we review all the different, see what fits best.
We do, with the job.
You know, you gotta, you know, you gotta get ideas from somewhere, it's hard. Not everybody's just gonna get everything off the top of their head. But I think, you know, there is room for some, some work on this, and, you know, try to make it more acceptable in town, but I think there's a lot of stuff that's coming in, so I think we need to move fast, we have the moratorium, it's, you know, we gotta get it done, you know, before more applications are gonna be grandfathering, so I think it's important, try to do a little more work on that.
Thank you. Mr. Savizio, have a good day.
I think you seem to be confusing the pro and the negative, all right? So, I think we're on the pro. So, that's what I thought we were doing, okay? So, I'm gonna say that the best thing you can do at this time is pass this ordinance. And you, we, you instruct Jennifer to continue to look at other ordinances to add to this ordinance. Sending it back to us to work on it, again, with not improving what you have in front of you, is the worst thing you can do. And Jennifer made a report to you. Actually, I asked her to bring it to the planning board, so I'd like everybody here to know such a report was produced. You can cut all the trees down in 40 acres, completely covered with solar panels, and you've decreased or increased the green footprint. In other words, the trees are not as beneficial as the solar farms, as the solar panels, okay? You've got that report, you do remember.
I do, I agree.
So, so the idea of, we've done this to ourselves, and if somebody owns a piece of land and can make money on that land, we should allow that, without interfering with the health, welfare, and, and.
Thank you.
Thank you, of their neighbors, okay? So, building berms, screening Mr. Carpenter's statement of what we're trying to accomplish, I'm gonna say, again, DM is gonna accomplish way more than any percent of footprint or buildable lot. On a lot of pieces of property, if you remember some of the properties in this town, people get a house, a septic system, and a well, and if you want to cut them down to 30% of that, you've made their property nonusable. So, there are such things as tapings, and takings. That's when you make somebody's land nonusable.
I understood. I didn't hear the word.
So, so, this is a problem, I'm saying, to pass this. And then if you want to send it back to us, and you want Jennifer to continue to look at it, do that. But all people are saying here is, I don't like this, I don't like that, why don't we add this one, why don't we add that, why don't you pass it, and then send it back to us, or bring it, have Jennifer bring it to us for further review. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just gonna, I, I know, I've got several people, I just want to ask, I get to go first.
Yes.
I get to go first. This is, we, we have an ordinance, we sent it back. This is our first reading, so we can't adopt it tonight.
Can't adopt it tonight.
We cannot adopt it tonight, Mr. Savizio, because it's a first reading, so we will have to put it off to the next council meeting.
No, he's not.
No, he's not. But I stated it.
I heard it.
And it's, it's in the minutes. Okay, Mr. Rogers, you were first.
I really don't admire the decision that you guys have to make on this, but I'm not advocating for or against how it's written, but I just want to bring a couple of things to your attention. Our town is kind of unique, and I realize this when I started looking at other towns that I'm involved in on a state level. We mentioned Gloucester. Gloucester is kind of putting the brakes on to some extent. They've built a lot more solar arrays in Gloucester, far more than we have. Gloucester also has factory mutual that sends them over a million dollars a year to offset their finances. You guys are in a position to, you have races that come in front of you, you have budgets coming in front of you, they're going up every single year. West Greenwich, West Greenwich is lucky enough, they're almost comparable to ours with residents, well over 6,000 residents and about a $16 million budget. They've got 95 that hits two exits in their town on the eastern side of them. Just one business alone brings them in $2 million worth of revenue. One business of the hundreds that are in the area of those two exits. We don't have that. We don't have businesses coming in, we're not gonna have businesses coming in until we can get some stuff that I'm working on diligently, it's gonna take time. But what we do have is the solar farms, and the solar farms are generating revenue to offset the increases right now. Now, the balance that you have to find is where it's suitable to put it in, but it's not effective, being a negative impact, I mean, is what that decision is, I don't know, but you gotta weigh the balances, you want to give races up, you want to increase budgets, and you want to buy fire trucks. Right now, the only thing that's coming that's generating revenue in this town, more than anything else, are these solar arrays. So, I don't want to be, I've sat in that seat, it's a tough decision, but if you say no, then you're gonna have to say no to other things like races and police officers. And we've already cut the police department down to where they are right now. You have a police building that might be coming out of line, you've got libraries they're talking about. So, you can't say no to some things, you're gonna have to say no to other things, because without one, you can't have the other. It's just an unfortunate situation you're in, and that balance is gonna have to be found, so.
Thank you.
Is it possible that we can take the ordinance as a use, and have Jennifer work with us on it, to put these things in it that may need to be put in it and get it done expediently?
You mean the council work on it? The council has every right to put what they want into another thing.
I wonder if that's a more expedient way of, of doing it, and we're gonna, getting it back here to review again, is that right?
If I could just for a minute, I've made some notes that everyone said, so maybe we can, rather than spend a whole night imagining things, let me just go through two things you guys can see and agree with what I've got, that what all you have said. I agree that this has to be some type of percentage of property used that's important, other towns have that. I say, there has to be some type of percentage of property used, you can't just use the whole lot. And so, that's, that's number one. Secondly, I know in our town, there is, as Ms. Ryder said, a good point, is that there's six inches up from the ground with the fence, so little animals can get under. Our fence is only six foot high, no razor, and because deers, they figured out, I don't know, they said deers can jump six foot fences, but not, but not a, and what happens, deers get caught on a, and they die. So, that's something I think, so that's kind of your comment there that I, I've written down. The next thing is, I think opaque termine masking makes no sense to me, all due respect to Jennifer, I, I think you need some type of white pines, something that's not, either bodies that the deer will eat, I think you need some type of blue spruce or pines that need to go in with the cover stuff that's year round, including like oats in the, in the good weather and maples. No blasting, I, I wrote that down, I don't know where that stands with people here. Also, I like the idea of, and what a bond is for, is if the people, and what we've done in West Greenwich, that we're dealing with Colorado people, and they're coming in, and they're not gonna live in our town, so we've said, we have the five year bonds renewable. Because what happens, what a bond is forged when those people skip out on you, right? That's all it's for, it's an insurance policy. So, I like, that's what we have in our town, that's a good point why we brought that up. So, I think you have five year renewals, because that holds their heat to the fire, because they're gonna be living somewhere else and not in Foster, right? So, so that goes along with, you know, sure, you can, you can look into the surety bonds for more than just landscaping, you can say, okay, if it's in an area where it's prone to flooding, and it's gonna come and have all the gravel in your roads, and your DPW's gonna come, so you can, you can, the council can work on something like that. Special impact fees, I guess you can look at that as hiring technical, I guess it has to be some type of power of monetary cap put on that to hire people at the cost of the incoming people, because they're gonna forfeit some of that. But, you know, what you have to understand, and all of us that live in these rural towns, we're the only ones with the property, so they're coming to us. The issue is, at your state and federal level, both delegations are pushing this, the governor wants 20% green energy by what, next year or the year after? That's being pushed down low by growth. And from the stuff that I'm hearing, Senator Rogers may know better, is that if we don't have ordinances that are somewhat pliable, that the state legislature's gonna come in and put stuff in that we're not gonna what, just like they put in for these rural towns, 10% housing, low in, low in modern income, if you don't agree with it, they can violate zoning laws, they can put up 100 houses on, you know, 10 acres. So, you have to be aware of that, so you have to have an ordinance, but it has to balance both ways. So, these are some of the ideas that I took from you people tonight, that I will can type up in my office and give to the council, and give to Jennifer, and that can be included in some type of ordinance going forward. You gotta get something on the books, so that you don't, you know, you don't have these people piling in.
We have something.
But you gotta, better than, better than what's there, okay? So, I'm saying, these suggestions that you made, we, we made note of them.
Yeah, I have the same thing, and I have the flagged fence. There was somebody else, yes, Mr. Allen, do you have something? No, you're done? Way back when, we had, you know, when this was first brought forward, the whole economic part of it was brought forward. And supposedly, we were gonna get, you know, the treasurer was gonna be asked to provide proof that these solar installations are in fact supporting the town, that it does make such a big difference that a moratorium would injure the finances of the town. We never had that done. I think that that is, you know, I, I, you know, a lot of people believe it, a lot of people don't believe it. I just want to say, I, you know, in deference to Mr. Savizio, I would, I would like you to be proactive, and between now and the next council meeting, consider a moratorium, so that these people have time to go back and really go through it. We have enough in the pipeline right now, and with your budget, and who has the time? You've got, you're negotiating with, you know, contracts, you've got the budget, and so on and so forth. The planning board has been, you know, involved in this quite some time, and I know Mr. Savizio is big on subcommittees now. So, even if they don't get through it in a regular session of the planning board, perhaps a subcommittee could be appointed to go through it and bring things forward. But I think now is the time for the moratorium, before we become so inundated with projects, and we're still floundering, and we don't have anything that will stand up. Thank you.
Does the state want the taxes on these projects?
Our hands are tied.
Our hands are tied. We got one, and that we could, you know, we could get our taxes. But then because of the green, we can, and I forgot, I spoke with Catty Moreau about it. It's $5?
It's, we, we got one or two treaties in before they, they.
We got one.
And, and that's pretty much it. And then after that, I think it's five for every kilowatt.
Yeah, it's not substantial.
It's, it's not a lot.
It's $5 per kilowatt hour. That's all the town makes, considering some of the.
For a year.
It's not gonna stop.
$5 per kilowatt hour. That's what the town gets here, whatever the new rate hurts.
It wasn't a staff vote, it was an assessment of the property being used as.
Commercial.
As commercial versus as residential, and the tangible taxes, I have a chart.
The tangible, the tangible taxes are, as we just stated, and then it's, and then the property becomes valued at commercial rates instead of residential. So, that is in fact a little bit more profitable.
Right, okay. I know that I have a chart.
Yes, I'm sorry. I, I say three years, I'm gonna recognize you first.
Moni. Okay.
Mark, could you please add to that, that you're gonna request a third party opinion, because Cohog Company?
I think you did have that in there.
Yeah, that's like, I just, I just put a catchall hiring tech advisor.
So, that's a catchall?
Yeah.
Okay, because they said our, our house values would not go down, but a local guy
told me, yes, they will.
Okay, so we have that. We have that. Yeah, we have that. Mr. Allen.
Hello, I'm Mr. Valley Road. The issue of the rural town, Mr. Savizio brought it up, it's a real contention for Mr. Sheldon, who was also appointed to the planning board by the last council. The centerpiece and the heart of the comprehensive plan is that this is a rural town, and that it is, and that the town accepts the role of steward to protect the rural physical and social characteristics of Foster. Industrial solar is incompatible with the comprehensive plan, and we need a moratorium. It would be the best thing to do to protect the town, to protect the rural character, it's your duty and obligation to do this, as well as the board members. The town is not making any real money on these. It is $5 per kilowatt hour, that's all we get, so if you start adding up the few thousands of dollars that we get from each array, it doesn't add up, but there's a significant loss in terms of habitat, wildlife, quality of life for the abutters. You want to put these into AR zones, the abutters don't have the resources or the money to fight these businesses. They get outsued, and I don't have any confidence that the town will stand up to them. It's, it's, we're gonna see a repetition of what happened at Nine Mount Egea Road. So, I do ask you, if not for a moratorium, which would be the best thing to do, add the features that we need in this ordinance, that the people that you've put on the board denied in this version, in this draft.
Thank you. Yes.
I like, yeah. Since you're doing a lot of this, with all due respect, I disagree with you about opaque masking. Case in point.
No, I say, I wanted to add to it.
Case in point, on one specific, very large application, the planner came up with a very good solution, move it, move it to where it can't be seen over the ridge, and the applicant won't. So, language like opaque masking, we met many different ways. Secondly, just, I have to tell you that $100 fee for not doing what we're supposed to, as stated in the ordinance, is, is like, who cares? And since we are receiving unofficial information that they're going to have to be boulders removed on some of these installations, by the time the guy blasts and moves the boulder, and we go in and put the fee in, for two days of blasting for $200, do I care? I don't. So, we need teeth.
We, we add an increased fee. Thank you. That's money.
My understanding that this company is trying to get in everything in place by the panels and everything in place by April 1st.
Is that true, Jennifer?
Oh, that they have, they have solar panels. They don't want to get everything in place, they're coming in the quarter, March 20th, to get preliminary.
Yeah, that's, that one is already in the pipeline. So, that's 1011. So, the statement was that Ms. Fords has heard that they want to have everything up and go by April 1st.
No, they are getting solar panels.
Solar panels by April 1st.
Did you hear that, $3 million?
No. Sorry, right, $3 million. $3 million, not a lot. So, we have a lot of information here, we cannot vote on it tonight, we will be looking at it at our next council meeting. At this time, I'm going to close this public hearing, so we can move on to marijuana ordinance. So, we're, we're just.
Hold it, hold it, no!
So, I don't need to read the procedure again, but I'm going to open up the marijuana ordinance. Jennifer is here. Yeah, you will only speak to the council, you're doing a great job on this, I know it's a very hot item, solar was very hot, you guys did a great job, thank you for that. I'm going to recognize you, and then, again, this is the first reading, so we will not be voting on it tonight. Jennifer.
Okay, I'm scanning up, maybe that'll help. So, I worked with the planning board on developing a medical. So I worked with the planning board on developing a medical marijuana license, and what we did is we defined different uses. Compassion center, licensed cultivator, licensed non-residential cooperative cultivation, licensed residential co-op, corporate cooperative cultivation, and medical marijuana emporium, as well as residential caregiver and residential personal cultivator. So then we made a use chart. And for the compassion center, we prohibited in all districts except for GBM. Licensed cultivator in all districts except GBM, but by special use permit in AR. Medical marijuana emporium, which is like a place where you have a license, you could smoke with other people or take it with other people. That would be allowed in general business district. A non-residential cooperative, which is essentially a business use, would not be allowed in anything except the business district. Residential cooperative would only be allowed by special use permit in an AR district. And then residential caregiver cultivation and residential personal cultivation, that is something I was told by the attorney that you can't prohibit, so it's allowed in all districts. We also had a lot of, we talked to the police chief and other people about limiting or requiring a reiteration of the state law, which, like going to the building official, having secured and locked doors and alarm systems. I mean, I have to say that the state regulates these licensed marijuana very strongly, but we wanted to reiterate some of the language so that people know. And that's really.
Thank you. So I will open up this portion to those that are in favor of this ordinance. Is there anybody who's in favor of the ordinance? Mr. Savazio.
I just want to go on record as the planning board works on these things, and we move them forward in favor. So me sitting here.
We assume that.
Is in favor, okay?
Yes.
And I find it contradictory that people move, vote to move things forward to you and then speak against them, but that's a different subject. Thank you.
No one's even spoken yet, Mr. Savazio.
Well, that was the last one.
Thank you, Mr. Savazio. Anybody in favor of the marijuana ordinance at this point? What?
A question?
A question.
Okay.
I'm assuming the solicitor, having dealt with it in his town, has a good handle on where the state is on this and how that impacts the town? And if he could give us, I mean, you know, should we be getting our knickers in a bunch over this now or, or what?
You're old.
Excuse me.
No doubt.
I, the state is in favor of it, number one. Secondly, I'm hearing, and maybe Senator Rogers can help on this, you know, you may find out that every town and city is going to be able to have one, like liquor store, marijuana store, which will maybe make it a little bit more move because now anyone can buy it. So what we're seeing in our town is that the police are having a hard time because this is all supposed to be strictly private. So they don't even know that these things exist, and then what happens? Fires occur. They don't, they can't go into, I don't know if police here can, can talk to that, but that's what we're seeing, and it's hard to, sometimes you can't even send your building official into these buildings and not allow in. So you get into them, and then there's like all sorts of electrical outlets and things like that, so there are, there are fire hazards. So the problem is, just like with solar and wind, the state is pushing this stuff down our throats. So we're trying to come in like behind the wave almost and trying to do the best we can with these ordinances. Because what will happen is if, you know, these people don't like it, they're going to sue, and they're going to, you know, like say, well, the state is a little bit different, and so therefore that supersedes your local laws. So you kind of have to stay within whatever the state is, is putting forth.
Sure. You know, this would never be one thing that I would go after either. However, however, it is a fact, and it is going to be a fact of our lives everywhere. And we, I believe, we need to get out in front of it. Well, in front of it, but we're, we're probably behind it a little bit, but I mean, we have to come up with something. I don't know how you work around those instances. There's got to be something, maybe.
Senator Rogers, I must choke on that. Maybe Senator Rogers does have some insight on that. I am just teasing you, but maybe you have some insight on.
You don't see upstate or?
Not tonight.
Okay.
On that.
I've got the bill, and I've seen a lot of bills come through. It's weird, I'm new up there, and everybody's running bills around, and they're about this big. That marijuana bill is that thick. I haven't gone through the whole thing, or a friend of mine going through it. I will get you bills if you want the marijuana bill. My personal opinion, I'm in Bivela, it's going to be on both sides of us, Connecticut mask. But what I think the problem is, they don't have a state level, is what I'm going to say up there. I think it's going to be like a U-Hip situation where they're rolling something up that not only you guys aren't prepared for, I don't think they're prepared for it on a state level.
I don't either.
So I, it's not that I'm against it, I just think it's the wrong time to do it. They're trying to jump the gun. It's, it's half and half. It may or may not pass. At this point, I think it's a 50% pass in the legislature this year. But you should get definitely prepared for it, and if you do want the bill, it's that thick, I can give it to you. It may help you on how you want to do it, so.
I think Jennifer might.
Yeah, so I, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Right.
I reviewed some of it. It's like, it's absolutely, who knows if it will, like you're saying, 50/50? But one of the things that was in the bill was that if a town wanted to prohibit it, they had to do it before November 2019, this year. I can't believe they just did it that quickly.
You can't?
Otherwise, you have to go, the town has to vote on it, and the majority have to prohibit it. And not only that, you have to prohibit each individual thing. So like cultivator is one thing, a compassion center is another.
And another thing that you have in this bill, the current bill as it stands, is pretty much going to take out the medical growers that have license to grow to provide care for people that are on their list. You'll see a few of them around the town and private residents that have legal grow licenses. With the new marijuana bill, it pretty much cuts them right out because they're beat compassion centers. So they're eliminating any, anybody from growing it on their own. And some of the questions I had was, they legalize alcohol, you can brew beer at home, you can have wine at home, and it's not against the law. But with this bill, it will be, they're legalizing marijuana like alcohol, but they're not legalizing it for you to grow it at home for your own, which, which to me was odd. And it may be subject to change, like in Massachusetts, you can pay, it's about the money. You can pay for zip tags and grow it at home, and they've got their money, and we can grow it at home. Right now, so it's going to eliminate a lot of that, so it's just going to be growers, compassion centers, and stuff like that. So the small individuals around that are providing for medical care that are licensed now illegal, that you have in your zoning that you couldn't outlaw, will be coming out. So it's, it's going to be even a moving target on a current, current situation.
They're really pushing this because she's actually included some of this in her budget?
Yes, right.
Like, I think it's 15%, what did you say? 60% will stay in the state's general fund, 15% will go back to the municipalities, to be shared by the 39 municipalities. That's her way of, I think, well, I want to say, to like get everybody, yeah, to get everybody on board and excited, because we might have a new revenue source. And then, of course, God knows if it'll still be there in five years, but then, and then the rest of it will be shared amongst the communities who have it and have a compassion center, like based on their supply and their sales, then each of those communities who have one will then share their remaining percentage. And she's budgeted $800,000 for some of the fund to go, sort of all they put in a trust fund. $800,000 will go for substance abuse prevention, so encourages the smoking, and then we're, we're going to carry with the $800,000 worth of substance abuse. And then 60 will stay, 60% in the general, 15, and then a split. Now, mind you, we've had general revenue sharing years ago. I don't know if you were on the council that, do you remember? And they cut it, you know about that, right? You knew. They cut it right out of the budget one year.
Oh, yeah.
In May, they just said, you're only going to receive half of what we allotted, and next year you're going to receive none. So I don't know if this is a push to, to have everybody pro this, this law, because then the municipalities will have a new source of revenue, or whatever, but the fact is, like you said, our neighboring communities are going to have it. So whether we get it next year or the year after, it's happening. And like she said, if you don't prohibit it by a certain date, or do your own thing by a certain date, you would have to bring it to a townwide vote every time you want to make a change. So you really should do something.
She, she did say it wasn't about the money, but she's correct, there's $6 million, I think it's $6 million in this budget for revenue.
It's not about the money, but, but I've used it already.
Is there anyone else? Yes, Mr. May.
Is it here, you know?
I can.
Hold the man in the room. I just got a couple of suggestions, and I'll try to do this without using any strong
Makes nice love.
One of the items in there talks about the compassion center. I think we ought to change that to the addiction center. I think the other thing that we need to do is get a more comprehensive study from our police department on what the negative impact on the community is and the individuals' adult senses.
Chief Wright has spoken to us, not necessarily about the medical marijuana aspect of it, but the recreational.
It doesn't make any difference. It's all the same. It all stinks. I'm of the opinion that if somebody requires medical marijuana, he ought to get a prescription for it and get it in the drugstore, not out of his backyard. End of story.
Thank you, Mr. May.
Lynn, hold on, hold on. I know you're excited.
You're tacting, you're too tacting, sir.
Yeah. Let me give you some facts. 1968, I got fired for my first job at Ohio Wesleyan for saying all drugs should be legalized. I was teaching drugs and alcohol. Last year, the United States spent $800 billion in the war on drugs. There's a statistic that 20% of the population uses cocaine, all right? If anybody thinks, no matter how you deal with these laws, police departments, it stinks, if people want a product, there are people that are going to supply it to them, okay? So do we need compassion centers? Absolutely not. Do we need to legalize marijuana? Absolutely not. Will it take it out, hands out to criminals? Who the hell knows? But people will try and get the substance they want, right? The state, the town, no matter what the entity, if we can benefit from the legalization or the passing of a law versus expenses for trying to enforce a non-enforceable law. In fact, you know, Bill Cosby had a joke in 1978. The only people in the, in the town that can't find any drugs are the cops. I've been in this town, I was a college professor for 19 years, never knew one person who went to Woodstock. I've met 13 people in this town that went to Woodstock. This is the marijuana capital of the state.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Savazio. Mr. Savazio, are you making a point here?
Yes, I am. So, so this needs to pass for our benefit. That's the point. Thank you.
Okay, and Mrs. Roger?
I just, in the interest of, I guess, reality, again, I'm going to, if you would ask, you know, the solicitor, legally, I mean, I think a lot of this is way above, everyone's paid rate, paid rate. We want, the town, I assume, wants to be as much in the driver's seat as they possibly can. The question is, does this do it? And if not, what else can be done? That's all.
Thank you. Yes, one second.
Hi, my name is Al Fella, 114 Davidson Pike.
What were your names again? I'm sorry, sir.
Al Fella.
Thank you.
I was a police officer for 25 years, 15 of those I worked undercover in narcotics. Unfortunately, this is the time the green wave is rolling. There is a bill in the US Senate to legalize marijuana, HL420. So whether we like it or not, it's going to come. Question is, can the town foster repotter, have rhythm of sharing in it? And this is what we have to ask ourselves. I mean, I have a daughter who's 18, you know? I don't want to see her get into opioids. I'd rather have her smoke marijuana than get into opioids. And now they are starting to use it for opioid treatment as well. So that's something we all need to say.
Thank you. Yes.
In Astoria in South Killenley Road. She had stated that the state is going to get taxed, taxes from the sales from these compassion centers and things like that. Do we have anything coming to us from that? I mean, what for us?
Because 15% would be, right now, according to the budget, 15% is going to be shared amongst the 39 communities of whatever they collect. I'm assuming, they stated revenue, so I'm assuming it's gross revenue.
It's not, it's not that.
And then if we have a center here, or if we have something here, we will get a greater, we will get a percentage of the difference between the 60s, so the 75, there's our remaining 25% that will then be shared with the communities who actually have the facilities in their communities.
So we can't tax those places on our own?
Well, no. Actually, in the state, in the state law, it actually mentioned that we can't charge a licensing fee. I forgot, you told it, you say that we cannot charge a licensing fee or any sort of extra fee.
Because we can't know where they are.
I don't know about that.
The state can't be the government of health or something that regulates these, and they get the licensing fees for it?
They get their licensing. Right, right. So it's, it's out of state.
So can we tax them for like tangible property or?
I don't need to even win those places.
I don't, I don't know, do we, so are we giving them?
We haven't figured that out yet.
I don't know, so there's so much up in the air. We're going to actually move revenue.
But it's going to happen, it's going to happen.
It's going to happen.
Right. Mr. May.
If you're looking at revenue from the state, consider a few items that the state has done for us before. They gave us recycling. Remember they were going to pay for that? How do you get the state to recycle or not? Nothing, exactly. They've done the same thing with the conveyance tax. Started off that the municipalities were getting, I think it was 55%, then they cut that down, and the state, now the municipalities are getting less than 50% of that tax. So if they're going to promise you a big windfall tax on marijuana sales in these addictive centers, I'm sorry, compassion centers, what's to say that they're not going to cut back and grab some more money for themselves? Because that's normally doable.
Right.
Whatever happened to state aid?
Yeah.
Remember that term? State aid?
Yep, yep. Yeah.
I said it all.
Thank you, Mr. May. I'm going to close this public hearing now. Again, this is our first reading, so we're going to address it at our next council meeting. Again, this is our first reading, so we're going to address it at our next council meeting. That being said, we're going into executive, I lost my, we're going into executive session. For future agenda items, there were, in your FYI section of your packet, there were a couple of things I'd like you to look at and let us know whether or not you, whether there's anything in there. We also have our ordinances that we'll be looking at. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Oh, okay.
Thank you for coming. Take a candy on your way out.
I move to executive close session pursuant to Reddell General Laws 42-42-4. For the reasons stated in Reddell General Laws 42-46-5 for...